Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This time of the awards and presentation.
Okay, we have a joint, official joint recognition going to Ms. Bridget Carrington, presented by the mayor and members of the city council. This award is to recognize Ms. Carrington for her personal success as contestants on the ABC audience TV competition program, UX. Ms. Carrington appeared in nine episodes which included a live performance of internationally known of nine-time Grammy Award winner singer-songwriter John Legend.
We want to take this opportunity to congratulate you for being such a wonderful poster child for the city of Richmond and bringing such great attention to our brand. We got the opportunity to see you and you have such a supportive family out there. If nobody else is proud, they are proud and they're here to make to show that, I believe. And I attended a viewing with the family at Hippodrome and the place was just packed. So thank you for being such a wonderful talent in our city and we want to disguise the window. John Legend, John Legend is just the beginning. So thank you so much and congratulations.
And I also would like to congratulate all of our city employees, stars, perhaps your superstars. And we just want, on behalf of council, I want to wish you the best of luck in your new career, what you're working on, and I hope you don't have to lose your one step, but if you do, good luck and good evening.
Thank you very much for showing me so much support, such a great and blessed opportunity to share the stage with some of the biggest names in the industry from Jennifer Meadows, Kelly Clarkson, Robyn Thicke, to be invited to John Legend's home for his Fourth of July barbecue and to meet Stevie Wonder. I mean, who gets to do that? So just amazing opportunity, getting feedback from him still to this day for my music. I'm releasing a single tomorrow, it's called "Fall Off." It'll be on iTunes, Stevie Baby, and Amazon. And I also have a performance at the Hippodrome this Saturday at 6 o'clock with Weird Ab. So anybody wants to come out? You can get your tickets on theweirdabshow.com. And my dad, my mom, my sister, my aunt Pierre. And also the boss, Mr. Bill Wheeler. So thank you all so much, I appreciate it and thank you.
Next, we have the Virginia Municipally Green Government Platinum Award.
Mr. Mayor, President, Members of Council, Joe Lurch with the Virginia Municipally. And I'm very pleased to be here tonight to present the Go Green certificate to the city of Richmond this year at the platinum level, which is the highest level. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you remember four years ago, we were at a luncheon up here on the fifth floor with some other members of council where you were giving a short speech about the initiatives that the city was to embark on, on sustainability. And I remember you opened it up to questions from employees and I think at one point after about the fifth question and then somebody handed you a 20-page proposal on switching the fuel fleet to natural gas, you whispered over to Alicia Zachoff here, you said, "I had no idea." And she said, "You ain't seen nothing yet." And I think Alicia was right. And I really think under the leadership of this administration and participation from the council, you already be applauded for reaching the platinum level this year for the Green Government Challenge. So congratulations.
I just want to say that we really appreciate this award from the DML. And when I first became mayor and we got the silver, I said, "We will not stop until we get the platinum." And so we're delighted to receive it back and tonight. We're very proud of all of our green initiatives, our green initiative plan. We're proud to have had the opportunity to hire the first person, full-time person to do green initiatives, Alicia Zachoff, our President of Natural Gas Buses, all of the good things that we've done to make sure that we are a green city. Our new fire station is gold, LEED certified, our schools are LEED certified. And so we're on track and this is just the beginning. So thank you so much for this award.
And I also just want to thank you for the reward and just to say to everybody, Richmond is on the move. I'll just go.
Next, we have the official recognition award to Dr. Leonard Leighton Edlow, presented by Mr. Newville. Honorable members of city council, do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Dr. Edlow. Honorable members of Richmond's Edlow Pharmacy and Pharmacy of Virginia, at 1974, Dr. Edlow Marius BS in Pharmacy from Howard University, a Masters of Divinity from Virginia Young University, and a Doctor of Pharmacy from the University of Florida. Serving as the Senior Edlow in Pharmacy of Edlow's Professional Pharmacy, Dr. Edlow is also the pastor of the New Hope Fellowship in Gloucester, Virginia. selected as a member of the American Pharmacists Association Foundation Board of Directors in 2012, Dr. Edlow has served as an executive in residence at the Longwood University School of Business and Economics and holds clinical appointments at Green Colleges of Pharmacy. A dedicated professional, Dr. Edlow has served as a owner of a number of local, regional, and national boards and organizations, writes articles and presents on topics that involve economics, health, and pharmacy. In addition to his many works and endeavors, Dr. Edlow also hosts a WCLM radio show on WCLM Radio in Richmond. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Dr. Edlow and thank him for his contributions to our community and helping to make Richmond work as an even better place to live, visit, and raise a family.
Thank you. Dr. Edlow, it's my absolute pleasure to just say thank you on behalf of certainly the residents of the East End community, but certainly the city of Richmond in general. You have built your own legacy that began with your father back in 1945 and you can continue that work and commitment and it was hard work and I know that, but you stand in business not just in the East End, but certainly on the South Side and at Barnes and Coors. And I know there were days that folks came in and didn't have enough money to purchase data medicine and you made a difference in the lives of people throughout our community and our city. And we just want to say thank you for that legacy of commitment and of service to the entire city of Richmond. And so on behalf of certainly city council, I thank you, but certainly on behalf of those in the East End who will miss coming into the building and running in and checking, I think, Dr. Edlow, how are you? We just want to say thank you, thank you so much.
I just want to add my congratulations, Dr. Edlow, and to thank you not only for Edlow's pharmacy, but for your activism in the city of Richmond. You've been a strong voice for social change in the entire city and we really do appreciate that. 25th Street is not going to be the same with you not being there. And so we really appreciate the days and the years that you have put into making Richmond a better place to live. And I look back there and I see your wife and I see that I put you together very well because you're still together.
Thank you, Dr. Edlow.
Mayor, President, Vice President of Council, Councilperson Newville, and President of the Council, and then the people of Richmond, I just want to say thank you. It's good being able to come down here and receive an award. I had quite a reputation when we were across the street in the old city hall trying to get things straight from our old cities. But I just, I just say thank you. My father was an orphan and he was a medical pharmacy student and he come here originally. As I would say so many times, as I also preach on Sunday morning, usually God gives you because I think we had the smallest pharmacy in the whole country. And like I said, it was having something cold in the winter, which meant the heat, the air conditioning didn't work well, but we worked with that. And because everyday people loved and just being proud to have a person that looked like them, they could come in and add prescriptions. It just meant so much and it kept me going even though many times I was ready to say, "This is it." And even though I won't be dealing with pharmacy with profit anymore because health of this city, this community, this whole state and back in the whole country means so much to me, I will continue to find ways to improve that, if just on the radio show, but I know with other groups, as they call me, to make presentations on this area because we spend too much on healthcare and don't get the results we should get. And it all comes from a lack of knowledge. So that's, that's going to be my goal in the years that God gives me to just let people know why they're sick, why they're taking all this medicine. Maybe we can save a few lives and save a few dollars. But again, thank you so much.
As Dr. Edlow goes to his seat, I just want to add that he also is a minister of the law. And he never misses an opportunity to teach. I learned so much listening to his radio program. We urge you to tune in, WCLM Radio. I suspect he ain't going away at all. This man has been serving all his life for boards and officials, but he's such a teacher and we thank you for your wisdom and your guidance all these years. Thank you.
Next, we have an award of honor and remembrance for Mr. Major Harris III, presented by Council on in Newville. This is to remember the life, music, and memory of Mr. Major Harris III upon his passing on Saturday, November 10, 2012. This, the Remembrance Award is going to be descended of Mark Houghton. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate, and remember the life, music, and memory of Mr. Major Harris III upon his passing on September 10, 2012. On Richmond, Virginia, on February 9, 1947, Mr. Major Harris III rose to fame and is known internationally as a singer and a member or a tag in the early 1970s of the solo musical group of Del Finesse. Leaving to pursue a solo career, Mr. Harris went on to record and release a number of songs which include the hit single "Love Won't Let Me Wait" in 1975. A dedicated musician, Mr. Harris III continued his singing career over the years and last performed in 2011 at a reunion show with some members of the Del Finesse. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby recognize, honor, celebrate, and remember the life, music, and memory of Mr. Major Harris III upon his passing on Saturday, November 10, 2012, on behalf of the entire community.
Thank you. As you heard earlier, the city of Richmond is home to extraordinary musical talent and we would be remiss if we did not take the opportunity to stop and recognize the passing of one of those legends in his own right. And it is just an absolute honor and pleasure to be able to present this award, to recognize one of Richmond's own, born and raised in Jackson, Oregon, and just a talent known not just in our city and in our Commonwealth, but throughout the world. And we just wanted to take time to recognize and appreciate his incredible contribution. And I think Mr. Jewel will probably remember this song and maybe a few of us will have to dig in our archives, "Love Won't Let Me Wait," but I think Mr. Jewel has that one. But certainly hopefully generations of now will look back and remember this extraordinary talent, our own son, Mr. Major Harris. Thank you.
First of all, as in the words of Mr. Harris, he would say, "We are all praises that we forgot, but without God, he would not have gotten where he is today." And I would like to accept this. I would like to accept this in his song because I know he's up there looking down right now with a smile, that infamous smile from one ear to the other to know that he is being so fond of his home. He loves his home, Richmond. He's taught us all the time. He always said, "Without here, this is where the loops were. This is where he started from." He could not have gotten anywhere else without starting here first. So again, I would like to thank you, I'm honored because I know that he is fond, to know that his hometown, he loves his home so much. Thank you.
Have you ever had time to the audience, the Nekre, the Jawbells, another legendary group, Mr. Little Tommy, if you would stand, please? We just have one, we could almost have a little concert here this evening. Okay, maybe not this evening.
This is his oldest and dearest friend and this is where one of the loops that he was entangled with going up in silence. Yeah, they both are out here, he's piano, he's singing.
Well, thank you. And I know Mr. Jewel again will remember just a little bit of soap from the Jawbells and so the next generations will dig in the archives, but thank you so very much and congratulations to you, man, as well.
The next award is a Community Service Award presented by Mr. Newville to Mr. Brian White. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Brian White. A dedicated leader in this community for the past three years, Mr. White has provided vital support and assistance to families on behalf of the Combined Community Services Project that purchases, prepares, and delivers Thanksgiving baskets of food for those in the wealth of Richmond East and Sixth District. During this time, Mr. White has personally helped to sponsor and deliver nearly 100 welcome baskets to appreciative households. In America, public government and community services are considered to be among the most noble and important work that a person can do. And through his leadership and actions, Mr. White has proven his dedication to support of principles and creed written in the founding documents of our great nation and that our individual personalities and families, communities, cities, state, and country who are holding the aspirations of our federal constitution, republic, of the support of all its citizens and realizing the fulfillment of this promise. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. White for his outstanding leadership, dedication, and service on behalf of families living in Richmond East and Sixth District and thank you for helping to make Richmond work, work an even better place to live and raise a family.
Thank you. Richmond has a lot of unsung heroes and Mr. White is one of them. The next set of gentlemen who come up will, are also among them, but I just really want to take this opportunity to say thank you. It's been three years, time has really flown and I think one of our schools says it best and so I'm just home to read what they said. For the last three years, Mr. White has contributed his finances to help purchase Thanksgiving baskets and then we have gone door to door to deliver them without fanfare, without any notice, but just with much appreciation and being able to, you know, feel a great sense of gratitude for certainly being able to help us as families. And this Tuesday party Thanksgiving, we dropped off baskets at all five of the elementary schools in the East End and then three of the public housing developments. And so this letter I think says it much better than I. This is from one of our elementary schools who says, "On behalf of students, faculty, and staff of Shimerasso Elementary School, we would like to thank you for the generous donation of Thanksgiving baskets to Shimerasso's families. The Thanksgiving baskets enable our families in need to celebrate and enjoy this Thanksgiving holiday. Together, we can work to alleviate hunger, which will enable our students to focus on their academic success. We thank you for your tremendous generosity and commitment to our families. Shimerasso would be greatly honored by your continued partnership with our schools. Thank you so very much."
Sure, I'm prepared to say anything. I'm very, very humbled. Thank you. We have been very fortunate to have some success in our business in this Newville's district and we've been developing housing in the district for not about 15 years, but we wanted to do something to recognize the members of our neighborhood who are not as fortunate as we and it's been a very rewarding experience, experience the last few years. And I thank you for working with us. Thank you.
We have another Community Service Award presented by Mr. Newville to Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council 6457, a Holy Rosary Catholic Church. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the dedicated members of Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council 6457, a Holy Rosary Catholic Church in Richmond, Virginia. Known for delivering a great many programs and services to the community, to the community for the past three years, Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council 6457, a Holy Rosary Catholic Church has provided vital leadership, support, and assistance to families on behalf of the Combined Community Services Project that purchases, prepares, and delivers Thanksgiving baskets of food for those in need throughout Richmond East and Sixth District. During this time, Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council 6457, a Holy Rosary Catholic Church has helped to sponsor and deliver nearly 100 welcome baskets to appreciative households. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council 6457, a Holy Rosary Catholic Church for its leadership, dedication, and service on behalf of families living in Richmond East and Sixth District, and thank his members, partners, and supporters for their continuing commitment to help to make Richmond an even better place to live, visit, and raise a family.
Thank you. Could I ask Sam Patterson to come forward as he's also a member of the organization? And gentlemen, I can't say thank you enough. When I looked at the pictures from this year, I said, "Wow, these are some incredible gentlemen." Brian, all of yourselves, as we went out to the room. And I certainly want to just say thank you. You heard the letter from school, one of the five that we delivered to, and certainly you were there and went door to door delivering to families. I cannot thank you enough and on behalf of the families that we were able to serve, I think for three years, a dedicated service in our community and to this effort. And look forward to next year. Okay, put your hands up. But it has been an absolute pleasure, gentlemen. Thank you so very much for your continued service.
Madam Council, I want to say on behalf of the, the gentleman standing before you, it's one of our missions to support the community regardless, efforts in food, family, finances. One of our main missions to give our community, not only the community, I want to thank you on that behalf.
Thank you. And we also managed to have a little 512 jokes as we are out of, you know, trying to load the vehicles and boxes are missing, you know, the bottoms and things drop out, but gentlemen, thank you so very, very much, Brian and Sam, all of you, thank you.
Next, we have an official recognition award presented by Mr. Jewel to Virginia Commonwealth University Department of Emergency Medicine. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize Virginia Commonwealth University Department of Emergency Medicine for successful work on a recently completed clinical research. Considered one of the finest emergency medicine clinical research facilities in the country, Virginia Commonwealth University Department of Emergency Medicine took on a national leadership role in a five-year research study designed to develop an alternative treatment for ongoing acute seizures. Health experts from many Americans, Richmond Amnest, are trying to treat 1,000 seizure patients each year, and 100 out of those have continued seizures and need immediate treatment to stop it. Sponsored by the United States of America Department of Health and Human Services, National Institute of Health, a study named for rapid anti-compulsive medication prior to a rabid trial study was part of the clinical research of the Neurological Emergencies Treatment Trial Network of 18 leading medical centers in the United States that are working together to develop a treatment for neurological emergencies that have acute seizures. Assistance with the study locally include Richmond ambulance support and medical doctors hospital retreat and campus. A tremendous successful study, the results were published in February 16, 2012, issue of the New England Journal of Medicine, and indicated implications of changing the national standards of care regarding treating of seizures patients. And therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the recent Department of Emergency Medicine for its effective work on recently completed medical research study regarding alternative treatments for ongoing acute seizures and bring this to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Members of Council, high-end institutes who have witnessed what this guy brought to us from about three years ago. This clinical trial, research projects that, you know, when I was a boy, maybe 10 years old, I saw my first seizure right in front of me and I didn't know what I was looking at. And this poor woman, girl, just ridden in the snow at school and somebody said, "Mom, she's having a seizure, get a spoon." I answered, "What are you going to do with a spoon?" This woman died. I had to keep her from swallowing her tongue and that essentially was the treatment for seizures back then. What these folks did in this clinical research was come up with a way in which you could do anti-seizure transmission of medicine quicker than the normal way we normally do this. Dr. Onadoff is our clinical specialist with the Richmond Ambulance Authority. We have one of the best ambulance authorities in this country because of the guidance of our clinical record, who does nothing but look for ways to shorten the delivery of treatment to emergency Christians. And this was one of them. I was intrigued when I saw it. I'm now amazed to see the result. Dr. Onadoff serves now only serves us, he always serves us with such pride in Richmond. We're blessed to have him and thank you and God bless him. We're blessed to have him, and thank you, God bless him.
Just a few words, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, city council members, and particularly my friend and colleague Marty. It's really truly a privilege for anyone in the healthcare profession to be allowed to participate with our patients in research to try to find better ways to treat those that we serve. When we're doing research on individuals who are unconscious, as is the case in someone having a seizure, where time is absolutely of the essence to save their life and to preserve their brain function, it's critical for us to be able to work as partners with our elected officials, with our citizens, and to have our paramedics, our firefighters, our police officers, our first responders, be partners with everyone in the city, to be able to know with confidence that we have your support, to be part of projects such as this, to try to find better and quicker treatments. In this case, we had your support, as we always have. We don't take it lightly. It's absolutely critical to the work that we do, and it's critical to the future advancements that we continue to make year after year. So thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you, and a special thanks to all our paramedics and firefighters and public safety folks, without whose actual day-to-day help this would never have been possible. So thank you all so much.